Good evening, Board members, staff, members of the audience. Let the record show that today is Tuesday, November the 17th, and the time is 7:00 P.M. And we will now call the Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting order. Before we approve the agenda, we will make one amendment. One, five, our public hearing. A will be a joint public hearing between the Board of Supervisors and the Amherst County Service Authority. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All in favor say aye. The agenda is now approved with the amendment, and Mr. Martin will lead us to the implication of flag allegiance.
Let's pray to God. Our Father and our God, Lord, we just come before you as your humble servants this evening. Father, we just pray for your wisdom tonight as we go about the county's business. Father, we pray you a blessing on our citizens, on our staff, our EMS, our fire, and our law enforcement personnel. Father, we just pray for this great nation, and just pray that you will place your hand upon it. Just be with us tonight, and we pray that we will do your will. In Jesus' name. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We will now move on to citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? We will now close citizen comments and move on to the public hearing. First will be a public hearing, A, and of course, the Board of Supervisors has already been called into order. Ms. Moore?
At this time, I'd like to call the Amherst County Service Authority Board of Directors meeting to order. Let the record reflect that today is November 17th, and the time is 7:02 P.M. Any approval of the agenda?
No.
Do you need to show who's here?
Ms. Rice, do you have down who's here for the Service Authority Board?
I don't know what you're saying. Go ahead.
Do you have down the attendance for the Service Authority Board so that we can show when the minutes are there for them? Mr.?
Well, I will be putting that in minutes. Yes.
Thank you. All right, now, we're going to A, adjustments to service authority warrants, rate, fees, Ms. Moore. Hold up, Mr. Hopkins, are you here?
Good evening, everybody. On September 1st, the Service Authority Board approved rate structure adjustments for 2021 recommended by the Service Authority's financial consultants that directed me to prepare an ordinance for supervisors' adoption, to get the county code amended, to get the new rate structure in there, and also schedule and advertise the public care. You have before you a draft ordinance, 2020-0015, which includes an increase in water rates of 5.56 percent, which is only 30 cents per 750 gallons of purified water, with no increase in the basic service charge, and sewer rate increase of 6.56 percent, which is only 52 cents per 750 gallons of treated wastewater, with a $1 increase in the building basic service charge from $5 to $6. These are the lowest combined rates increases that have been proposed since 5% water and sewer adjustments were requested by the Service Authority and adopted by the supervisors in 2017. As reported by the Service Authority's financial consultants, the average residential water cost would go up about $1.50 a month, and the average sewer service would increase about $3.60 per month. Those are the lowest increases since 2016 and 2018, respectively. And we're not proposing any increase in the connection fees. We adopted them for the first time in five years coming into 2017. There are four major areas of need that justify this. The first one is a general category, and that includes inflation, the cost of continued compliance with water and sewer regulations that get stricter every year, replacing aging equipment, updated technology needs, staff compensation increases, and the like. A policy of modest annual adjustments was adopted by the Service Authority Board many years ago to minimize impacts on household budgets of these rate increases, many of which can only handle with difficulty more infrequent but larger double-digit increases. Second category has to do with Service Authority water and sewer infrastructure, much of which is many decades old, nearing or beyond its anticipated service life and deteriorating, reducing level of service that needs to be replaced. Much is undersized with too many service connections, which accelerates deterioration and further reduces level of service. It was installed for existing and planned at this time future services, but county growth has outstripped what was planned. Many water lines are too small to supply hydrants and need to be replaced with larger lines to provide neighborhood fire protection. In 2020, the Service Authority received its eighth consecutive and 10th in 12 years Annual Waterworks Performance Excellence Award from the Department of Health, facing a large number of costly infrastructure upgrades, refurbishments, and replacements to be able to continue to meet federal and state regulations and maintain the Service Authority's mission of contributing to public health of safe drinking water, fire protection, and environmentally safe wastewater disposal. Service Authority's service area has hundreds of residences with onsite wastewater treatment systems. A large number of these systems are at or beyond their expected service lives, and they're starting to fail. Sanitary surveys by the Department of Health going back as far as 1980 identify the need to extend public sanitary sewers into these areas to prepare for drainage field filters. A few years ago, the county supervisors and Service Authority Board established a program to jointly fund such extensions. Some projects have been done, several are ready for construction or in design, but many more projects will need to be completed, creating another asset management situation requiring annual adjustments to our rate and fee structures to fund this public health work. Lastly, in the next six years, we have several major costly capital improvements projects that are going to cost a total of about $9 million. The Service Authority's financial consultants annually update our five-year cash flow projections and are advising us that annual fee and/or rate adjustments are necessary for us to be able to borrow money for these projects, meet debt service obligations, and stay financially solvent. The first project scheduled to be started next year and finished in 2022 is improvements to the reservoir dam that costs a $1.134 million. The next one scheduled to be finished in 2024 is a tertiary raw water intake on James River that costs $5 million. The third, scheduled to be finished in 2026, is an upgrade to the Williams Run Sewer Pump Station that costs $2.25 million. The first two projects are mandated by the state. We have no choice but to do the work. The third is a long overdue overhaul of our main sewage pumping station, which pumps 98% wastewater collected by our sewers across James River to the Lynchburg Treatment Plant. The dam project recently was scaled down in spoken cost from $5 million to $1.34 million. That, with funding and financing in place to start the work next year, helped lower the annual rate increases for 2021. It is hoped that future annual adjustments will be lower still, but any reductions will be minimal because of the other asset management issues I've already discussed. It is to be noted that the Service Authority's 2020 Water and Sewer Rates and Fees Benchmarking Study shows that the average Service Authority residential customer has a cost of water service lower than half of the utilities our size in the Commonwealth. The cost of sewer service to our customers is similarly less than half of the utilities our size. The United States Environmental Protection Agency cites water service to be considered affordable if it does not exceed 2.5% of an area's median household income. An average customer using the Service Authority's utility-wide average of 120 gallons per day would have a water cost of $39.19, which is less than 1% of the county's 2018 median household income, which is the latest data I could find. So that's just about 1/3 of the maximum that EPA considers affordable. For a sewer-only customer, the cost would be a little over 1% of the county median household income, which is still less than half of the EPA affordability's maximum. And the average combined water-to-er customer would have a cost of $82.91, which is only about 2% of the median household income, and that's still only 80% of the EPA standard. And the last thing I want to say is that in 2018, when we were applying for a community development block grant for sewer project, the Central Virginia Planning District Commission, and they told me this later, they were told by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development that our Service Authority rates are so low that without adjustment upward, we may start having difficulty getting such grants. I'm not really sure how that works, but that's what I was told by the PDC. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Hopkins? Thank you, Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you.
All right, we will now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak opposed? Anyone wishing to speak opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we will now close the public hearing.
So at this time, we need a motion from the Service Authority? Or would you please?
They did. Oh, they did? Okay. Yeah. Any questions? Is it your recommendation that this?
It is the Service Authority's recommendation that we adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, Board members, you've heard the recommendation from the Service Authority. Are there any questions?
I'm very sorry. Can we just have a motion and resolution from the Service Authority Board to adopt the new rates and fees as the Service Authority Board, and then turn it over to the Board of Supervisors? Just to get the language right for the record. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt rates and fees of the service as proposed by the Department of Health for the Service Authority.
Thank you. Now, do you need anybody to say aye? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any votes?
So that comes to us.
That's up to you.
Okay. All right, Board members, you've heard the recommendation and the vote from the Amherst County Service Authority now comes to the purview of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the suggested rates and fees of the Service Authority.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All in favor say aye. The motion passed. Any need to close your meeting?
At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
移到
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor say aye. Service Authority? Speak. Yeah, I'll make the adjournment.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, we will now move on to ordinance 2020-0014. Mr. Bryant?
Good afternoon. Within the subdivision regulations of Amherst County, family divisions of property parcels are allowed and require different, usually less, regulations. Family divisions are allowed for a member of the immediate family, which is defined as any person who is a natural or legally defined offspring, stepchild, spouse, grandchild, grandparents, sister, brother, or parent of the mother. Currently, the regulations do not allow for a family trust to use the family division regulations. This change would allow the beneficiary of a family trust to receive property through a family division. It closely follows the language of state code. The planning commission recommended approval of the request and the recommended motions that the Board adopt of this 2020-0014.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, we will now open the public hearing for ordinance 2020-0014. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of? Anyone here wishing to speak opposed? Hearing none, we will now close the public hearing and move along to the Board. Board members, are there any questions, any conversation? Not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board adopt the ordinance 2020-0014 as presented.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All in favor say aye. The motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Moving forward to the special exception.
Hey, this is a request by Patricia Kryszewicz for a special exception request through the agricultural district. The purpose of this special exception is to allow for a dog grooming business. The proposed dog grooming will take place in an existing structure which is 12 feet by 20 feet. It's surrounded by an existing fence and beside an existing parking area. The parcel includes existing structures such as a carport, dwelling, and two horns. You may find this interesting, but in 2007, the Opticon platform was approved for a petting farm. I'm not sure if you've handled that business or not, because it was around for a couple of years. At that time, a parking area was added as well as a commercial entrance that met the requirements of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Horseshoe Creek Road is a private road that serves three dwellings. Horseshoe Creek Road is located off Fairmount Road. I want to point out that this proposal is not for boarding. It is just for grooming. This request is in voting, Mr. Bryant. And the planning commission approved it with a number of conditions. I won't read them all off, but there are five conditions. These are customary conditions that we see for this type of use. And finally, I do want to point out that one of the conditions that we added as a result of this type of use was to have an inspection from the animal control officer prior to issuing this article. If that does engage them prior to that process. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Bryant. All right, we will now open the public hearing for special exception from this Department of Supervisors. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of? Anyone here wishing to speak opposed? We will now close the public hearing. Board members, any questions about this? All right, hearing and seeing none, I would like to go ahead and make the motion since this is my district. Move that the Board approves special exception 2020-391 with the conditions recommended by the planning commission. All in favor say aye. The motion passed as I described. Please pass it along to the requesters. Thank you.
Thank you. The final fellow hearing that I have is this is a request about Mycelyn Vine Hartless for special exception in the A1 district. This special exception is to allow for a short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. Mr. and Mrs. Hartless have been three joint parcels that total approximately 50 acres in size, dwellings located across the North Fork of the Buffalo River, and users of the property would be able to ford the creek to access the dwelling. North Fork is a state-maintained road. Staff originally made comments and voiced concerns about the parking of the vehicles and how to access the dwelling because you do have to ford a creek in order to get a vehicle to the dwelling side of that parcel. However, after consulting with VDOT and the applicant, the applicant worked to put a gravel area that's off of the VDOT right-of-way. VDOT has approved and is okay with the entrance, so there is now parking spaces on the opposite side of where the dwelling is, parallel to VDOT. And again, VDOT's okay with this. This is a unique feature. They built a very, very nice pedestrian bridge so that users can park on private property and walk across a pedestrian bridge to the property, or they have the option to ford a creek, which might be actually a unique feature and welcome to the U.K. Amherst County is one of our unique areas of breakfast. North Fork Road also is unique because it is a state-maintained road that ends into the mountains, and there are two forties of the creek along the state road. A few years ago, a resident that lived on North Fork Road contacted the county and asked if there's two bridges, two pedestrian bridges, at those creek crossings. And staff worked with VDOT, and we weren't sure if it was either a VDOT bridge or a car service bridge. We worked with VDOT after discovering it was their bridges, and they approved the bridges. So it's kind of a unique character of that area already, the fording of that creek. That happens, again, twice on North Fork Road where there's a pedestrian bridge. So staff's original concerns about adequate parking is brought down because of VDOT's approval of this. So the planning commission recommended approval with five conditions, and this request is also in District 2.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Any questions? I think they do have some questions that just want to ask me. What about, as far as I'm concerned, this is their problem, not the government's problem, but if there were a safety issue there through a fire, through an accident, how does public safety access that part of it?
That's a great question. They could, I doubt they could get a fire truck across the creek. It's fairly steep and dangerous down and across. The dwelling's there, so the house is already there. I would imagine they would have to pull fire hoses across the pedestrian bridge that's built certainly. After a while, Sam Bryan and his staff would figure that out, so.
It's a risk you take if you live in a remote area. That's the only question. Board members, any questions?
They have a question. So when was the structure built?
I don't know the age of the structure.
It was the early 60s.
Early 60s. So, okay, my point is, we wouldn't allow structures like that to be built today, right?
We would. We would.
Without a driveway access to?
We wouldn't. As long as, well, in this case...
Well, see, now, that's a problem. You're telling me that we would allow a structure to be built without adequate emergency vehicle access?
We would look at the use of the land. We would look at setbacks. We have a private road ordinance that does allow for up to, and subdivisional ones, up to five single-family dwellings, and we regulate the number of parcels that can be subdivided. In this case of giving, we get ahead in existing lots. I think we could allow a structure to be built in this case. We have a lot of mountainous property in Amherst. I'm not sure we would restrict someone to build in this case. I think we probably would.
But this particular case, it's already there.
I understand that, and I don't want to get down a rabbit trail, but this does concern me that we would allow people to build homes or structures in areas that are not accessible by emergency vehicles or medic units, that type of thing. I'm not sure you that the emergency service in Amherst County could have us to get there, but I do not think it's good practice for us to be building structures that we know aren't accessible with a steel roof or fire trucks and ambulance. So that's something that we definitely look into. And there are, you know, there's a huge subdivision in, I'm trying to call it southwestern, southeastern part of our county that has some very horrible roads that we have to deal with, so we need to look at that. But I don't have an issue with this. I think it's a, you know, an existing structure. I think it'd be part of the appeal if it was coming to it, but longer term, we need to look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Thank you, Ms. Martin. All right, we're now open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone here wishing to speak opposed? We will now close the public hearing. Board members, is there any further discussion before we make a motion? All right, since this is in my district, I'll make the motion. And I, Mr. Miss Hartless, thank you for doing this and giving some folks the opportunity to be able to come and enjoy that part of the county. And it is kind of rocky, and it is different, and I think that's the beauty of that part of the county, so thank you. I want to make a motion that the Board approves special exception 2020-391 with the conditions recommended by the planning commission. All in favor say aye. The motion passed.
Thank you. I think that was 2020-458.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me correct myself here. Long record is a long one. All right, I'm gonna withdraw that. Mr. Bryant, you have to withdraw the motion or can I make a corrected amendment? amend it?
You can merely amend it because everybody knew what you meant, merely amending it for the record.
All right, for the record, let me, I'm gonna amend my motion to reflect that it's actually 2020-458. Do I need another vote?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that catch, Ms. Moore. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Seven.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Warren. All in favor say aye. The consent agenda is moved. Special presentation by the hazard mitigation plan.
I'll be real disappointed if this is not much, going to be much of a special presentation. This is just an update. We've talked about this for the last six, eight months. The planning district commission has been working on a hazard mitigation plan or updating the existing hazard mitigation plan, and we've been involved, the county's involved, all of, most if not all of municipalities in the area have been involved. That plan is now, the draft is now complete. It's been submitted to FEMA for review, and it's out for public comment, and that's really what this announcement is all about. You've got a copy of the board information in your board packet. This talks about, a little bit about the plan, and talks about where people can go to see the plan and also submit comments for it. And the only other announcement, or the only other part of this is the media announcement that's also part of your package. And that's really all this is. I am working, just to let the Service Authority folks know, I'm already working on a grant application to FEMA, and I'll probably be bringing that up for discussion at the next board meeting or early in January.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Any questions for Mr. Hopkins? All right, I understand. This is just information. We don't need to act on this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, did we skip the consent agenda? No.
Oh, they did? Okay. Yeah. Any other questions? Is it your recommendation that this?
It is the Service Authority's recommendation that we adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, Board members, you've heard the recommendation from the Service Authority. Are there any questions?
I'm very sorry. Can we just have a motion and resolution from the Service Authority Board to adopt the new rates and fees as the Service Authority Board, and then turn it over to the Board of Supervisors? Just to get the language right for the record. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt rates and fees of the service as proposed by the Department of Health for the Service Authority.
Thank you. Now, do you need anybody to say aye? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any votes?
So that comes to us.
That's up to you.
Okay. All right, Board members, you've heard the recommendation and the vote from the Amherst County Service Authority now comes to the purview of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board allows public work suspended remaining allocated. PDRT funds on other parks and trail projects are listed until the morning of the summer.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor say aye. The motion passed. Thank you for your support on this.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rogers, here's that update. Is there anything?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Board members. I thought I'd run down the list and let you know where we stand on each of the projects that are listed on your funding allocation sheet. The town portion has been spent and the money distributed to the town. The public safety shelter has been ordered, has not yet been delivered. Hot water has been installed at Monroe Community Center. Small business grants are progressing fine. There are still applications coming in, so we anticipate being able to distribute all of those funds. The nonprofit grants have all been distributed. The duct cleaning and the other HVAC projects are all on schedule. Southern Air is progressing on all the buildings that they've been given to do. The broadband funding, I spoke with the president...
Good day.
Last board supervisors meeting, I presented a list of approximately $92,000 based on realized savings preparing for Virginia Blue Ridge Railway Trail. At the meeting, it was decided by the board to run this by the recreation parks board first, according to decision as possibly made by the board of supervisors. They had their monthly meeting last Monday with Mr. Martin in attendance. They reviewed the list and passed it with no alterations. So before you begin this evening, to ask for your consideration to spend on this money on the parks and the trails.
Any questions?
I'll say I appreciate you coming to that meeting and just kind of get the thoughts of the board. Appreciate you doing that.
All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board allows public quarters suspended remaining allocation PDRRT funds on other parks and trail projects listed until the morning of December.
Motion for by Mr. Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
My name is Rogers. Carez Act update.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members. I thought I'd run down the list and let you know where we stand on each of the projects that are listed on your funding allocation sheet. The town portion has been spent and the money distributed to the town. The public safety shelter has been ordered, has not yet been delivered. Hot water has been installed at Monroe Community Center. Small business grants are progressing fine. There are still applications coming in, so we anticipate being able to distribute all of those funds. The nonprofit grants have all been distributed. The duct cleaning and the other HVAC projects are all on schedule. Southern Air is progressing on all the buildings that they've been given to do. The broadband funding, I spoke with the president of C-VAC today, and he, I'll give you another update on broadband later, but that is progressing fine. All of the VDOT permits that are required have been approved. There's only one left for them to pay the fee and then pick up their permit, so they're working mightily to meet the deadline. We don't believe there will be any...
Can you turn that down some sound?
We believe that they'll have all of the spine, the backbone lines in, in all the areas that they're going to, and we will have several people hooked up on each of those spines before the end of the year. You know, a lot of people, a lot of customers are scheduling their hookups later, like into January or in February, but you know, we can't control that. So we will have met our responsibility under that. The teleworking equipment has been purchased. In fact, we're probably going to go over in a few areas, which is okay. There's funding available for that as we receive more requests. The savings, for the most part, are done. That's the leftover salary switch money. The schools' money is, they continue to send us invoices, so they're on schedule with spending there $450,000. Miscellaneous COVID expenses, that's our catch-all for a lot of small projects, and they're all fine. Public safety supplies and equipment have been ordered, and we're waiting delivery. And the park restrooms are all under construction. I saw a photograph of them today, and they're coming along just fine, and we are getting ready to receive them at each of the four locations where they'll be installed. Does anybody have any questions?
Board members? Thank you, Ms. Rogers. All right, moving on to county attorney's report.
I have nothing to add, Madam Chair. Thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. I do, I want to give you a snore update on a variety of projects. Mago did pass his legislative agenda at their annual meeting, printed that out, but didn't get, make it into your boxes, so it'll be in your boxes in the office. Unless Rachel put it there at your place, you know, it'll be in your boxes tomorrow. With regard to...
I don't have a box.
Yes, you do. In the front office, hanging on the wall.
I didn't know that.
Well, that's because the ladies generally bring your boxes down to you, and that's what you see. But that's where we store it during the week, so if you wanted to come by and check your mail or check anything out, so you don't get it on the night of, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you.
I thought that was common knowledge. I've been there for my entire time here. Okay, with regard to the Central Virginia Training Center, this last week was the charrette, and a redevelopment plan has been sort of firmed up with regard to what needs to go where on the site. Since May, there have been over 400 people involved in developing that plan. It is being refined at the moment. So the details of the various buildings, the zoning, the infrastructure that's got to go into place, that's all got to be worked into the plan. So it will probably take several more months before we get the actual written documents. But that is coming and is on its way. At the landfill and the transfer station, a Boxwood Farm Convenience Center site is being graded as we speak. The equipment for that site has been ordered and will be delivered by the end of January. Now, the crew that's doing the grading at Boxwood Farm, the trees have been removed from the transfer station site at the landfill, and so this crew that's doing the grading at Boxwood Farm, when they're done there, then they'll go and begin the grading work at the transfer station. And of course, they're, at this point, they're still unscheduled to complete the transfer station by next November. We are hoping that Boxwood Farm will be open by the end of January as a convenience center. To give you an update on broadband, with regard to SCS and the wireless broadband, we are awaiting engineering reports on the last two towers, Amherst Central and Rocky Mountain Tower. The equipment is in place, it's ready to go, we just need the engineers to say that's okay. That's a bit of a question for Amherst Central, whether it can handle the additional load. So it'll be important to get that engineering report. The engineering report is due at the end of this month, in November.
Explain that engineering report again.
So the engineers have to determine that, given all the equipment that's already on there, when you add more equipment, you're essentially building a big sail, and whether the structure can hold in the wind all the additional equipment. So it's an incremental increase, can handle that increase, and that takes engineering calculations.
Did you say it's already been installed?
I did, I misspoke. The equipment is on hand. It's been delivered, not installed.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, with regard to the VADI grants, we have three VADI grant applications that are in. We don't expect to learn the results on those awards until end of February. So hope you understood that from the beginning. We have received $1.87 million so far for CAREZAC money and Governor's Fast Track money, and that is being used to lay fiber optic cable. As I said earlier, all the VDOT permits are in place, the crews are out right now near Temperance and the Boxwood Farm area, and starting to lay and or hang that cable. Today, we got notice that Lit Communities has terminated its contract because they believe they are unable to complete the build-out plan as they contracted for back in August. So we are working now to, in response to that. I mean, the way forward is our plan at this point, because we don't know the results of the VADI grants until February, so we'll know whether the areas that we designated for VADI money will be built out or not. And once we know those areas, they will be added into the county's GIS system. Mr. Bryant has already been loading in the C-VAC work, so it's not public, but we have a private layer that we're keeping track of which areas are being covered. Mr. Lockaby is seeking from Comcast an identification of the areas that they already serve the public with internet service. And so once we have all those areas in, we'll be able to see what is not yet covered in the county. And then in the March timeframe, we'll go out with an RFP soliciting proposals to build in the unbilled, the areas that don't have broadband, and receive those proposals. Because by then, we should have our salary switch money. We will also have the school division's $450,000 contribution toward that. We'll combine all that, and that's what we can, we'll have to try to work broadband, continue down from the north and the east, up from the south, to hopefully meet in the middle, out in the western empty part of the county.
It's not exactly empty.
It's empty of broadband service, is what I mean. That's where it's worst, the worst section, and that's what we're, and that would take the longest to get there because it's devoid of any fiber right now. Even wireless has shadows.
Well, I'd just like to start with there. I received an email from an individual in Monroe area off of Coolwell, and he was explaining to me a situation, that the cable stopped about a quarter mile from his house. He's been trying to get it from Comcast and so forth. There are a lot of people like this. And in the email, it was, it said that they wanted $5,000 to extend the line down to his house. I don't know how viable that is, that Stephen Acton, I don't even know if they operate that way. But it would be a good thing for me to know or for people to know. Are they actually, do they actually do that? If you want them to extend the line down to your house, you can actually pay for it out of your pocket.
Of course.
That's part of our agreement with them. That's not the case in every locality, but that's something we negotiated with them. And the prices are high, but they will do it if you're willing to pay.
Well, that would be something we would look at, you know, for internet service, because there's areas that aren't out in certain parts of the county that don't have access to, you know, they've got Wi-Fi, I suppose, or the, from the Verizon Towers, the air packs would have, but there are a lot of people like that that don't have, they don't have faster speeds.
I would suggest that you offer up to them, that they hold off as long as they can, because if they're close to where we already are, then the chances are really good that we'll just continue to extend what we already have, and we just might get to them.
Oh, yeah. There's no way he would pay that kind of money to us.
So I got one of those myself today, and told them that our goal is to reach every home and business in the county, and we hope to do that within two to three years if we can, and if we can keep finding grant money to do it.
How much, how much are we out with Lit Communities?
Oh, that's, that's... So, yeah, I'd like to go on with communities. So my understanding was, we went out and we hired Lit Communities to come in and do a study for us, tell us how to best serve our citizens in Amherst County project, correct? And, you know, otherwise, we were just going to be, in my opinion, kind of spending money blindly, and this was going to tell us where we should invest. So are there any ramifications for them just saying, oh, well, we don't want to finish the study, we don't think we can?
Well, to date, we have paid them for the work that they did to help us prepare the VADI grant applications and to prepare an RFP that we use to get the contract to get the schools' wireless trailers. Beyond that, we have not paid them anything.
And I hope we're not going to pay them on other bids.
That is correct.
Just to play.
And, yes. So they simply gave me notice today that they couldn't, they couldn't finish. So I, to be honest, it's been a rocky relationship from the beginning, and they have moved deadlines back and back again. And it's not a surprise. I learned in my phone call with them today that they really haven't done anything that the original scope of work called for. And so there is no way that they can finish, and they'll not receive anything further from us. So we're not out anything other than what we've already received.
Mr. Rogers, didn't they have some type of an interest in offering up themselves for some carbon-upcoming contract for broadband?
Yes, ma'am. That's their, their business model was that they would come and design, build the system, and possibly even operate it for us. And we told them from the beginning, one, we don't want you, we don't want to operate the system. And number two, if you are going to design it, we are not going to allow you on the contract to build it. We see that as a conflict, and I understand that to be illegal in Virginia. So I think that had a strong part in the fact that they have many contracts, they have many customers, most of which are larger than we are, and they devoted their attention there rather than here.
Well, I tell you what, we started conversations with them in office. Here it is, the middle of November, when you're notified. I wish them well.
Which is after the deadline, when the study was supposed to...
I wish them well.
It was, it was a rather heated conversation today.
Well, I would hope so, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but this is kind of set me off a little bit. So I think you kind of mentioned what our path forward was, but one of the points of bringing in the experts was to tell us the best way that, I mean, we're talking about spending millions of dollars, and we're talking about going into next budget year, probably putting in even more county resources in the bar, right? So I would like to know that we're putting it in the best places that we can, right? And I've always thought it was going to be a mixture of different technologies, whether it be wireless or fiber. So do we look for another company, or what is your plan for?
Well, I laid out the plan forward. You know, we're going to identify the areas that are already covered, and we will identify the areas that are not covered at all, and we will solicit proposals from different companies to reach those areas.
Why don't we do that?
Well, because the board requested that we hire a consultant that had expertise, and so we can continue to, we can go find another consultant to do this. But staff is confident that, you know, we can, we can put one wire at the end of another wire and get the county built out, and with the help of the citizens who identify that are not getting service, this we can map out and we can do.
Well, but they were also, the two things they did was help us do the application for the VADI grant, and then help us do some type of other application, which that was, there was value in that. But the way I look at it, if we can use staff, but money that we would have paid an outside consultant into broadband, and we feel like we're doing it in a methodical way, to me, that's much better value for money.
I think so, too.
Mr. Martin, do you have concerns of that?
I just kind of feel like we probably lost three months.
I don't disagree with you. And that's through, I call it counties.
Well, if I can, if I can differ, in that time, we have hired C-VAC and Firefly to put in $1.87 million by the end of December. The only thing we're out is a written booklet with a map that has the sections in order of how they would recommend that they be built. We have available to us C-VAC, Mr. Gary Wood, we have River Street, and we have Zytel, and we will, and we will also attempt again to get Comcast involved, each of which have expressed an interest in the county and has resources, Zytel does not, but the others do, and have a sense for what's already here. And so I think we can, we can do this. Without fear of any major mistakes, the only mistake I see that we can make in terms of how we build it out is there might be overlap, and all that does is acquire some competition. So I think we can handle this, and I think we can move forward. To be honest, I'm done chasing after Lit Communities, and it's been a bit of a distraction. No, we won't have a plan. Oh, we'll develop our own plan and our own build-out, and we will use the expertise of the, of the companies that we already have and know and trust and that own our business.
So there was no holdup in the contract, Mr. Lockaby?
There was no liquidated damages clause for delay. Now, if we went and, if we went and procured ourselves a replacement, and they wound up being $20,000 more, I think we would be well in, within our rights to go hat in hand to Lit Communities and say, you owe us $20,000, because that's the difference in the cost between what you said you were going to do and what these people say they're going to do it for. But I think that that's probably the best that we can do. It was very much of a, we pay you after you provide us the service, which means they provided us something that we could not have produced in-house. We could not have produced a body application in that turnaround. It would have just frankly been impossible without their help, and we paid them for that and not paid them for anything else.
Fair enough.
Maybe we'll come up better than this.
Anything else, Mr. Rogers?
With regard to, a few other projects, just to let you know where they stand. On the River Edge Park Trail, Culver has been designed, our engineers are now designing over an area of the trail where the sewer line... over an area of the trail where the sewer line is a bit more shallow. And so, to address service authority concerns, we are going to have some soil borings and see what we need, whether we need to build a walkway over that area of pipe, or add more fill above it to protect the pipe. So, the engineers are working on that. And with regard to the River View Convenience Center, we have advertised requests for proposals from, for engineering services, and those are due at the end of this month. So, we'll have that to begin the design work for the River View Convenience Center. That's all I have now, Chair, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions? All right, moving on to the departmental reports, possibly on fully staffed.
Well, Sam was going to be here.
Sam's here.
Oh, he's back, you're back, okay, great.
He's back. Sam, with the way where you were sitting, the microphone, we're picking up the radio.
I understand, we have a really hot Q and A call going on, so I'm going to try to do my report as quick as I can, get out of here. I'll just say that sometimes it's not, people that we serve get hurt, sometimes it works more responsibly as well, so...
You need to delay this a little?
No, ma'am, I'm going to do it to you, and I'm going to get out of here. I trust completely the people that we have, they're on the scene taking care of it. They're not going to let people visit the one hospital probably, so I'll catch up with them then, as soon as they're ongoing with it now in the Peeler area. It's an ABC, a park crash, UPS truck that's tree on it. It's been a windy day, a lot of calls.
Very windy.
Very windy, wasn't forecasted, so I had to send a little quick message out, all Blacks were on that. In your board packet, I sent you what we call a fractional times report. That'll be a busy report. We're a DERA agency, so we're designated emergency response agency. And this is very busy, but what it shows is, it shows median unit route time, and then the 90th percentile. So, you know, your median unit route time, starting in the first section below the gray, is basically an average, it's kind of like the median in between the road, and then the 90th percentile is where we're at. So, 50% of the time, we're at 11 minutes, but on the 90th percentile, the real time is 21 minutes. Our DERA agreement, and what we all agreed to do and try to strive for is to be pretty much anywhere in our county of 12 minutes, there's more going on. So, that's the first part of that. We're almost meeting it, but not all the time. The second part of this is, the unit arrived on scene and then left in minutes, so we strive for 18, a lot of times it's 34. The focus for us now, less it's trauma, it depends on the call, the nature of the call, how sick the patient is. Sometimes we have to do things immediately with patients to save their lives and soon up before we put them in the truck. And if it's trauma, we try really hard to put them in the truck and head towards independent care, which is the positions and expertise and the operating room. So, and then the next, the next field is, we're out, transport, that's how long it takes us to get from the scene to the hospital, 21 versus 33. And then, the last one is hospital time, and that's how long it takes EMS providers to turn the patient over, get a report, replace their equipment, get their drug box, whole box has to be exchanged, not just one medication, get back in service. If it's a basic life support call, which all our volume of the calls are, we can do that in 26 to 30 minutes. If it's a call where we're going to see critical people, or start IV, give them a bunch of medication, it could be as much as an hour. We've got to do the report, it's electronic, you've got to do the bedside report, you've got to clean the truck, test the COVID, and you have to replace all the equipment. Is that report helpful? No, okay. All right. How would you like to see it in the future?
The concern that I had, I'm just going to speak for myself, was I wanted to see the breakdown between how soon, how close, what was response time for Amherst, Madison Heights, versus what was response time for Western Amherst, that were...
So, that's all been provided in the past, is what you wanted for the next quarter, if I understand that. We've had 1,728 calls. If I look at this, I'm going to say with the Peeler unit in Amherst, it's a little better for your part of the county. We still have a very low volume of calls there, I understand everyone's important to get that, but we have kept the Peeler truck in the town here for the majority of the time. It sits there, you can see it just there. That's the busiest part of our county right now, in the mountains with... The second report I did a copy of that I didn't have when I, when we published, was really the same time report. This is the most up-to-date information. I think it's, it's not, it's a numbers game, and it's not as visual as what you guys are probably used for, used to. I think you would probably, everyone learns different. I don't know if you want a bar graph or a chart chart. Actually, this report shows it has a little bit better. Our median is 10.87 minutes, and the 90th percentile is 21.43 versus the 22.2, 21.43 minutes versus 22.27 minutes.
So, Sam?
Yes.
Can I translate that?
Yep.
So, the, the first number that you gave is our average response time. The second number that you gave is our maximum allowed response time, set by B-DAM?
It's Virginia Department of Health, and, so Dean has to review this every year. We just did this with our inspection, we did our inspection, and we did very well on it, we had a great inspection. Amherst is getting ready, Nelson does theirs on Thursday, and then Amherst Rescue does theirs in December. We had one of the better inspections in this area. They look at all our records, they look at the trucks, they look at the ladders, they look at all this stuff. The health department inspector does, he's a very serious guy. He can get rid of your certification with just two, three little fingers. As with the ladder work, he can, he can give you a lot of things to work with. This inspection was better than last. Let me see what this problem is.
For the vehicle.
Okay. All right, it's not close to the rest, because it's...
So, Sam, this holistic, they looked at this on the full scale?
We're rock and roll.
I mean, we have a whole lot to be proud of.
We are, there are, there are variables, depending on where the call is, what our trucks are doing when the call comes in. Like, right now, we were just on this car accident, we took care of the driver, the CPS truck, but now, we've got five of them. I don't really extend the injuries, but I ask you guys to keep that verse in your thoughts and prayers, and that's why I said, it's not always the people that we're serving can get hurt sometimes. And that's part, that's part of that fourth truck, or that other additional resource that could really help. I picked up these times down with the fourth truck, it's on the supplemental, that's why I'm standing here in front of you, I know you guys have an interest in response. We've got response in this county, we do it great. We think outside the box, we do things that are non-traditional that other departments can't imagine here. And we have people that are, that look at us fondly, and I have people that are interested in this department. So, we're not, the department working 72-hour shifts, we're the department working 36-hour shifts. I'm going to answer your question. So, since Mr. Moore asked me to check and find out, or look into how many times we had had mutual aid in our county, so I did a couple different ways. I looked at our CAD, computerated dispatch, and since, let's see here, since January 27th through September 30th of this year, there were 37 times for our, our CAD that we had an ambulance from outside agency that has a mutual aid agreement with us here on the calls, where everything was tied up. Since, since July, we have had six of those instances here. Let's say Fire Department covered five of those calls, and Central Health covered one of those calls at Fairmont Cross. The nature code of those calls was the calls that came in that we couldn't answer. Two of those were chest pain, two of those were hangings at our local gym, one was an abdominal pain and a stroke, a stroke, and then there was one that was a difficulty recovery. So, those are all high-Q calls, calls that time matters. But I'm here to tell you the status of the department, also give you something to think about when we grade the supplementals, and you know, what the future is. You know, we do need it now, and we benefit greatly. There are times that our EMS captain, myself, or Gary, or Joey, or Al, all of ourselves wait for the ambulance to get back. There are times that we would put private ambulances to help with call volume, and I enjoy that. I like being out there, love helping people, just behind other stuff, but that's why, that's why I'm shooting when I put the calls around, that's the number one thing. So, I'll be glad to answer any of your questions. I'll be glad to try to make a better sense of this vision for you.
I mean, holistic, when you look at the county in its entirety, we're like, they were doing a great job, thank you. And, so, thank you, thank you for...
The men are doing it all, so they're doing it.
Thank you for, for just, you know, trying and helping that piece of equipment in Amherst.
That's a simple request, it's, it doesn't hurt at all.
But they, they, they love to...
Oh, I know it did, and, you know, I wish I would have thought of that sooner, but I didn't, so I have to sit there.
But it did make a big difference, so that's, and, you know, and I am an advocate for that part of the county, those are my people, and they elected me, and I'll...
I live right over the hill from you, so I understand, I'm in the most rural part, I can shoot right over Gettysburg, Monroe, be right at you. I don't know, didn't he mention this, I'd ask to talk about it, our new truck's in, the one that you guys supported, he gave us Hassel, Hassel, I got a Grand Ford, it'll be here, it's a Ford F-550 Type III truck, it's oil driven, we do a great job, of course, the COVID funding, the Malle truck will be here, the Skene, the tall European truck that will fit in Station 3 of Ealing, that's where I want to put it, that's where I, that's where the data shows it needs to be, that truck can be staffed as a power shift truck for in future 24 hours, it could come out of the driveway, go right, head towards Madison Heights, or it can serve the Ealing community, go left, it can go towards Pedlar. If I had that truck in service, I could leave the Pedlar truck in Pedlar. Just stuff for you to think about, I'm available, my phone's on, door's open, everybody else will know.
Any other questions, ma'am? No, please, it sounds like you gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, I'd like you to shut up and speak.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Ma'am Chair, there, we have added $200,000 for that crew to the supplemental budget, and that is going through a prioritization project now against all other projects in the county. So, that will come to the board in our normal process.
When?
You start on the, on the capital budget in January, and then the supplemental follows shortly after that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Moving on to citizen comment, is anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close citizen comment. Any longer than that, remember to the board, Mr. Ayers.
I'm sorry.
Management of Board, Mr. Ayers. Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. So, I've got quite a few calls this week about Virginia Foam Insulators, which is a small business that's trying to locate in our industrial park, and it seems like they've been having some issues with going through our review process, and it sounds like quite frankly, the biggest issue with VOD, which we don't have a lot of control over, but I also found out something that kind of perplexed me is that we're sending very small industrial projects, 6,000 square feet, and by right uses to our planning commission for review, and I'm not exactly sure why we've got that step in our process, so I would like for staff to come back with pros and cons of keeping that way, I mean, we're trying to simplify our review process, why are we adding steps that are unnecessary? And I guess, I want to ask one or two. My second thing is, when I asked Mr. Bryant about whether or not we're allowing houses to be built without adequate access, I'm not sure I really, well, I didn't like things here, and I think we need to look into that a little bit more closely, while we're letting structure to be built without adequate access. And third, I asked at the last meeting about 151 and 29, and just a question, Mr. Rogers, follow-up to VOD.
That is a simple question, make sure I understand what your concern was. So, you're saying if somebody owns a property and doesn't have, you know, it's just got a long rabbit hole to it, are you saying, or they have four feet, are you saying that we should, they should have to visit through some kind of review before they, or they would move a house?
I'm saying, before they should be able to build a house there, they should have a driveway that is accessible by emergency.
What if it's accessible to their personal Jeep?
Okay, well, what if you need to go fire truck there?
I guess they take the risk, you know?
Yeah, until they got it.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, because, you know, that will, people will ask me, "How do you think about that?"
Yeah, I mean, there, there's situations like that now, I mean, there's places you can't get a fire truck up a driveway. I mean, it always has been. And so, do we make people have their driveways to the standards of, how many tons does a fire driveway?
In order from 30,000 to 50,000.
All right, so, I don't know, I think it's kind of overstepping the mark, and you bought this land, but, or, what about if a gentleman doesn't want to have a driveway, he wants to hike those, I mean, it's something, it's your property, that's kind of what I, what I get into, you take that risk. I, I don't know, if I want to get into the weeds that much with whether or not we should have a driveway that's accessible on all of our foreign EMS vehicles.
Well, it's a, it's a philosophical discussion, Mr. Martin has asked for us to discuss it, and I'm fine with that. I just wasn't, I want to make sure that I was clear on what you, what your point was.
Absolutely, we should not, not personally, we should not be approving roads or allowing roads that are not accessible, that are rutted, potholed, or people have to pour with treats to get to them. I understand it happens in the town, but I'm not, it's, it's just not good practice.
Mr. Bryant, do you understand what the question is?
I do, I think I'll have more questions as I do more research. It's a great question, we could explore that before, I, we'll be glad to dig in and prep on some more.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, do you have further questions?
Other than that?
Mr. Q? Is more, I think, and I might have anything, is there a motion for adjournment? Motion for both of us, more, all the papers say aye. I oppose no, we're meeting adjournment, thank you.